Okay, I guess that means we're gonna get started here. I will open the Tuesday, January 7th City Council Regular Meeting. Need approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Send agenda for the minutes of the past meetings. Need a motion? Or any changes?
I move we approve the minutes of the November 5th work session, the December 3rd regular meeting, and the December 9th and 10th work sessions.
Seconded. Seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Now we have our public comment phase. If anybody in the audience wishes to make comments, give us ideas, things to talk about? Or not? If not, we'll move right ahead. Jan, you have something?
And this letter is also from my husband Wes Worman, who cannot be here tonight. Dear Mayor and City Councilors, May the clear vision of 2020 guide us in this new year. Wes and I ask you, our Cannon Beach community leaders, to come together and send our national leaders nonpartisan support for a de-escalation of tensions with Iran. Whether by resolution or by other creative means, please consider as soon as possible sending a message of peace. Every peaceful thought, word, and deed in these challenging times can make a difference. We close with a quote from A.J. Must, an inspiring, leading member of the esteemed Fellowship of Reconciliation. There is no way to peace. Peace is the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're moving right along then. First item, I can't read. Consideration of ordinance for the purpose of adopting an ordinance for the purpose of amending the City Municipal Code Park Code. Okay, Karen?
I'll take this one, Mr. Mayor.
Bruce?
Yes. We've seen this before. But I think we're there. The markup that you have has nine changes. Two of those changes clarify that the designated representative for the city will be the Public Works Director. And then there's a definition of what parks are included. That reads, "These are including but not limited to City Main Park, Les Shirley Park, including the Hanny Edition and Nicola Pump Station, Nikus Park, Nicola Creek Park, Whale Park, Madison Park, Elk Run Park, Sitka Spruce Reserve, Tole Van Hall property, and the Sewards Lagoon Loop Trail System." There was, previously it was, "No person shall build any fire within a park. An exception was made for private cooking stoves, whether propane or charcoal, are allowed for preparation of food." There was no, previously, no consideration for temporary structures. Now it says, "Open-sided canopies up to and including 10 feet by 10 feet in size are allowed if approved under a city permitted event application." And you all are aware of that process, if it's over 50 people, that it allows us to deal with security, garbage, and all those kind of things, that we have somebody come through, I'm sorry, also insurance. So if something like that comes through, that tents 10 by 10, or canopies 10 by 10 would be allowed. Without having gone through that process, they would not be allowed. Is that right? Okay, I guess nobody jumped up in the back row, so I must have done it okay. All right. Section 9, "No person shall allow horses under their control to enter any park." What's been added is, "Park, City parking lot with the exception of horse trailers with temporary loading and unloading of animals in the west Les Shirley parking lot and the east end of Elk Creek Road." Section K, "Commercial activities defined as the exchange of any goods or services for money are not allowed in the parks." I added that myself. And L, "Usage of all park facilities is on a first-come, first-served basis, except for events of 50 or more persons, which must go through the city event permit process." So those are the changes we've been discussing. And that is what the Parks and Community Services Group is forwarding to you tonight. Any questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, I don't know if we can come under discussion and make a motion.
Okay.
I move to have the ordinance amending Municipal Code, Chapter 12.42, Park Code. Read twice by title.
A second.
A question I have is, this, the bucketing of horses, has that, is that going to be included later? Or is...
Yes, we decided to take care of these items and not wait for the horse issue. And I think that there have been probably two meetings already with Dr. Wayne, some other folks attended also. And so that discussion is ongoing. But this allows us to take care of other matters of concern.
Sorry Nancy, just to be a little more formal, let's vote on the motion, then we have questions? Or discussion?
We use a discussion and then vote on the motion. How can we vote on the motion?
Technically, you're supposed to vote and then discuss.
No, you discuss first.
Okay, go ahead.
And the other question I have is, I received a letter from a constituent asking me about smoking in the parks. And I think I asked this question before, I want to just clarify. Smoking is not allowed in the parks now, according to our ordinance, is that right?
There, I'll go back and look. I had to look the first time that we have designated areas that are designated as non-smoking. One is the skate park, when we put a sign up. We've done a previous discussion. I can't recall, the second location is...
I thought there was one.
Yeah, I don't recall. Let me verify that.
So, in general, smoking is allowed then in the parks?
Yeah, I think we just have two areas that are designated as non-smoking areas.
There was discussion at the meeting that that wasn't something that was on this list to be worked on, so rather than add it to this, it's something that they'll be taking up later. They're also gonna be discussing baby.
Good, 'cause I got that letter too. And I hope that it will be.
Yeah, they plan on taking up.
All right.
It is, yeah, sort of discussion. Anything else for discussing the motion at hand?
No.
Okay, motion.
I'll call the roll call.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Counselor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council, oh, Mayor Stidl?
Yes.
Do you want me to read it? Ashley's not...
Ashley's not here, so would you, please?
Okay. For the purpose of amending the Municipal Code, Chapter 12.42, Park Code. For the purpose of amending the Municipal Code, Chapter 12.42, Park Code.
Okay. Now we will ask for our motion to adopt.
I'll move to adopt the ordinance amending Municipal Code, Chapter 12.42, Park Code.
For the purpose of amending the Municipal Code, Chapter 12.42, Park Code. A second? Seconded, and a discussion?
Just that I would like to thank the Parks Committee for coming up with this and being so patient with all of the revisions that had to be made.
Patient with me, 'cause I've been the biggest one.
You said it, Sam.
And actually, this has gotten to a point, I'm still questioning whether I would adopt it. But it's been a lot of work, and I do appreciate the fact that we've done back and forth, so... Motion has been made. Colleen?
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Counselor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Mayor Stidl?
Yes.
Drama.
Yeah, drama, okay. Motion passes. We have a code. Next item, consideration of the Isler CPA audit. Oh, boy.
Want me to grab that phone?
Yeah, you can do the high tech.
I can do the high tech, the spot's next to me right here. Boof. Some of you might have to turn around, sorry about that.
So, after a little bit of chaos I caused when I got here, I gotta tell you my counting joke, of course.
Yep.
There's a physician, an engineer, and an accountant arguing about what the oldest profession is. The physician says, "Well, it's gotta be medicine, because God created Eve from Adam's rib. He was a doctor." And the engineer said, "Well, he created chaos," or ordered chaos. And the accountant said, "Well, who do you think created the chaos?" So by that, accounting is the oldest profession, right? Many of you have heard this before. I don't know, is there any new members of the council here have not heard this? This is, again, I'll tell you, this is required disclosure. We go way back to Enron now to have this. And you've heard me say before, we didn't have to disclose this to governing bodies, but now we have to. Auditor's responsibility. If you look at that audit report, in the front of it, there's a letter with our letterhead on it. That's our responsibility. We draft the report for you. But the statements themselves are the responsibility of management. In our world, that's called a non-audit service. And in that opinion, first of all, you have the best kind of opinion you can get. I would call it an unmodified, but that confuses a lot of people, so it's the best kind of opinion you can get. In that opinion, we say there are no material misstatements in this financial statement. And you've heard me say before, what does material mean? It means if somebody were to read these statements and make a decision based on the information in these statements, there's nothing, no mistakes in these statements large enough to change that decision. No significant findings, no difficulties encountered during the audit. We had no, I don't think we had any corrected or uncorrected misstatements. Just no disagreements with management. Management does sign a representation letter. It's about five pages long now, it keeps on growing every year, so, based on new accounting standards and based on if an auditor gets sued, quite frankly, things get added to that letter if either one of those happens, so. Far as we know, management didn't consult with other auditors related to audit issues, and we had no other findings or issues during the audit. So I have, and I've told you this in prior years, audited governments in California, Idaho, Nevada, and Oregon. And Oregon and New Jersey, the only two states in the Union that have standards, state standards governing audits of local governments. All the other states, you can be a CPA, and that's all it takes. Here, we have to have specific license by the state. And one of the things, some of the things we test are deposits of public funds. You can put your money into any bank account you want to, up to $250,000. Once you exceed the FDIC insurance limit, that financial institution has to be on the treasurer's approved list of financial institutions. And we test that. Debt limitations, there's a state statute that says how much general obligation debt you can incur, and it's based on the percentage of your real market value that's determined by the assessor's office. We do testing of your budget, no exceptions in the testing of the budget. We test your insurance, and really, all that consists of is us looking at, copy your insurance certificate and as directed from the state auditor's office, if, for example, your city had $100,000 of general liability insurance, that'd probably be something like, no. I've never made and reported an insurance finding on any government I've ever audited in the state, and I've audited quite a few governments, so. Programs funded from outside sources, you don't have a lot of that. We test them, what little you have. Highway user revenue, the state has certain things. You can only spend that gas tax they pass through to you. We test that to make sure you're not spending on things you're not supposed to spend it on. And investment of public funds, just like putting money in financial institutions, there's certain things you cannot invest in. And we test that. See if I can get this thing to work. You thought I was kidding about technology, right? All right, this is the change in fund balance in general funds. So basically, revenue and other sources minus the expenditures you incurred during the last, this is a five-year trend. You can see your general fund, last year, the expenditures exceeded the revenue, but as a whole, your revenue has been going up for the last five years. And this is the days in fund balance. And all of you are familiar with this now, this is a, all we do is take the expenses, expenditures in the general fund, divide that by 365, and see how many days in fund balance at the end of the year you could operate. And you're at 100 and, what is that number? 126? 126. I do have an eye appointment with my eye doctor coming up. I'm starting to notice it's getting a little fuzzy now, so I guess at my age, it's about time. 126 days is pretty good. That's a good place to be. This is something new I'm showing you, and I'm doing it for all your enterprise funds, which in the Gatsby world, you report those like businesses. So in the water fund, at the end of the year, you have by about $5 million of equity in that fund. So assets minus liability is $5 million. But of that $5 million, about $4.5 million is invested in capital assets, or in your plant. So when you look at that, and somebody says, "Well, we got $5 million, that's a lot of money." You can't spend capital assets very easily. It's hard to convert that to cash. You might look at that and say, "There was a lot of equity there," but not a lot of it's convertible into cash, very readily. I actually did that for all of your funds. We, I'll just go through this, it's the same concept. So in the wastewater fund, you're just over $7 million, almost all of it's invested in capital assets. That's your RV park fund. This is the recycling fund. And the reason there's a negative 1 on there, the guy that proofed these slides for me, he said, "Why do you put a negative?" Actually, in 2019, you're unrestricted, it's a small number, so it doesn't really show up on the slide, it is a negative number for unrestricted in that fund. And this is your storm drain. Any questions? We have no issues to report. We, I really do enjoy coming up here, this is, I mean, actually, one of my favorite audits to come to. You got a good accountant, she hasn't paid me to do that, but she do have a good accountant working here too.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Nope, never is.
All right. Lori can knows how to get a hold of me.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need to move to adopt the audit?
I think we do, hang on. An appropriate motion is in order, so we need to adopt the report. She's already out the door.
Whether you approve it or not?
Yeah.
Move to adopt the audit report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? Okay, Colleen?
Counselor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Mayor Stidl?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, consideration of a utility relief request appeal. Karen?
Our November 18th Public Works Committee meeting, the committee reviewed a review request that came through from the Miller family holdings of the address 1880 South Pacific Drive. The original request that came through was submitted on the wrong form. It was submitted on a disputed billing waiver form. And because this was an irrigation leak, we changed it and processed it up to a utility request, as it should be. So just to note, you'll see the attachment to this form, that's why. The Public Works Committee denied the request because our current policy is that irrigation leaks are not eligible for the university. So I do want to give a little bit of background of this particular address. At the time that this request came through, we had multiple things going on out there. In fact, not only irrigation leaks, but we did discover a city, a leak on the city side of our property. And the Millers were subsequently reimbursed for all associated fees. They had a leak detection company come out and assess before we ultimately found the leak. This went on for several weeks. And so they were reimbursed for all of that, as our policy does allow them to do. But for this particular particular request, it was for irrigation, not segment of the leak. That's why this is not happening.
Question, if it was on the city side, why would it have shown up as the item on their bill?
On the city, say that again, Mike.
We said that that one leak was on the city's system. And it was in the city's part of the pipe. Why did it show up as a leak on their meter?
Well, because they had multiple things going on at that residence. It wasn't just that particular leak that was detected on the city side. They had some irrigation issues. In fact, in 2019, they were actually on a leak list for six months. And in 2018, they were on four months. So they just had some issues out of the residence. So being on the leak list wasn't necessarily an unusual thing, but they were pretty good about getting the leaks dealt with and remedied in time with irrigation.
Karen, I think that, because I heard it too, it sounded like you said that they were reimbursed for the expenses for the leak on our side. I don't think that's what you meant, and I think that's what Mike is asking about.
No, I'm sorry. What I meant was, they had a leak detection come out at their expense. That company went out by their requesting their expense. And because it was isolated to the city side of the pipe of the well, we reimbursed them for that.
For the expense of the leak?
Yes, of the leak detection.
Okay, I thought you were saying for the water that was lost.
And there's some drywall repair in their garage. And so that, they were reimbursed for those expenses. But this particular piece of leak issues that were going on was not eligible for reimbursement.
Karen?
Yes.
So you mentioned that they were on the leak notice multiple times in 2018 and 19. I assume they'd been contacted?
Yes, that's how this all got started, is Darryl Walker on my water team is really good about working hard to keep our leak list down and be cognizant of water conservation. And so he contacted them and said, "You're on the leak list, weren't sure that you noticed that on your bill." He went out to the home probably five or six times trying to help them isolate where that leak might have been anything from a toilet flapper to irrigation to many things. But being private property, you know, city staff know we do so much, not supposed to be on private property working, but Darryl tries to assist the customer finding the leak. And so that's what got this started. They determined his initial visit that it was irrigation. And it was just kind of furthering from there. They have a lot coming in the garage from a cable conduit. They're trying to figure out where that was coming from. That water was chlorinated, so we just continued to try to isolate by a process of elimination of where that water was coming from. One leak took another. We got to a point where we looked at our previous leak detection reports from 2018, when we had the entire town assessed, and there were no leaks in that area. 2019, the same leak detection company came out, did another assessment from year to year. And again, there were no leaks in that area. So that kind of led us to believe that this continued to point to irrigation. And M&amp;F went out to their residence. They confirmed that the water in the garage is not coming from the meter, it blew the meter. And so, but he did feel that he heard water in his protect unit. He's up to the residential protect unit only, not like the commercial ones where the leak detection comes out as a full town. But he felt that he heard water adjacent from their garage. And ultimately, that was just about 150 feet from their property across the street. And it was on the city's property, so.
And I was pleased when I got here, and impressed with the effort that Public Works and Finance puts in to notifying people, working with people. We work very hard to not shut off somebody's water. Even to the point of spending as much time trying to help them find leaks.
They went out five or six times, even on the holidays, over Labor Day, trying to help figure this out, and it went on for several weeks.
I guess I'm just a little bit trying to understand, they've had some property damage. The city helped them out with that, is that correct?
Yes, just like in your sewer, if they TV the line and tree roots are in it, that's on the city side of the property, the city shares a responsibility of correcting that problem. The homeowner takes it from their property line out, we take it from ours out. And if the water leak, if a customer calls a plumber out, and we're in this case, leak detection, and they'd isolated to the city side of the property, it's not the homeowner's private property, then the city reimburses the homeowner for that.
Did I understand, though, that the leak that we had somehow was transferring through a conduit into their property, and we took care of that?
Correct.
I think that was your question.
It is.
Yeah, okay. That was our leak.
So our leak that also went down into that cable conduit into the garage, causing drywall damage, and that's what we reimbursed them to get back to here.
Okay.
That was charged for that certain protection.
Are the Millers here? Would they like to make a comment?
I'd like to represent them.
Okay. Do you want to make a comment, or just as...
I was just gonna read you a quick timeline of events.
You're welcome to.
Of events.
Introduce yourself and your address.
My name's Donna Beckwith, and I've been with the Millers for 16 years. And they give me a lot of authority with their property, along with their personal assistant.
And I need your address.
1135 Avenue F, in Seaside, Oregon. Just to start off, I wanted to say that in August of 2019, Jean Copes asked the Millers if we could give permission to the city to get onto their property to get to the wet well for repairs. The city has never got, had an easement to that part of the Millers' property. Somehow, it got overlooked 30 years ago. And so the city, or the Millers promptly gave the city permission to get onto their property to fix the wet well. So that's kind of one thing I want you to keep in mind. And then, so the water leak started Friday, of course, 5 o'clock of Labor Day weekend. One of the neighbors saw the water coming out of the Millers' garage and called me. As soon as I got there, Darryl came and turned off the water to the meter, and it was spinning really fast. We did have a water leak, it turned out to be about 40,000 gallons. But I do want to say that the Millers have only had one other water leak, which we got bef, that was like 10 years before. But on their water bill, every summer, it does say water leak, or possible water leak or something. So anyway, then, over the weekend, the water kept coming out of the conduit into the garage. My husband was there, he put a hose in to siphon it out into the drain, and it just kept coming and coming. Over that weekend, yes, Darryl made like four trips to the house. And at this time, we did determine that the water was chlorinated. So then, by that time, we did know that it was, had to be city water. So then, by Tuesday, September 3rd, my husband Dave and I figured out that the water was two separate issues. That, yes, we had an irrigation leak. And it took us a while to find it, but we did find it. It was in the backyard. It never went down the sewer. And then also that there was some kind of a leak that was coming, had to be coming from the city into the conduit into the Miller house. And then, let's see, okay. So this went on, and then we spent the next four weeks... It was in the backyard. It never went down the sewer. And then also that there was some kind of a leak that was coming, had to be coming from the city into the conduit into the Miller house. And then, let's see, okay. So this went on, and then we spent the next four weeks. I had to call the cable company because I was told that water could not be in a cable conduit. They said they didn't care. They said if it's chlorinated, it's a city water leak. I had to call the plumbers. That took about a week and a half to get them out. And Robert did determine that there was no leak inside the house. At that time, we didn't know if there was irrigation leak or not. And also, and we had the water off for three weeks at the Miller house, so the water was not going at that time. And so then I had to call the leak detection company from Portland, and again, that took a whole week to get them to come out. And this whole time, the city was saying that it wasn't our problem because the water was coming into our garage. And so my husband and I spent many hours in September dealing with this. I do want to say that Trevor Mount was always very kind and professional, even when I was getting frustrated with the situation, as were Darryl or Daniel and Sean. And they made a couple trips to the house to troubleshoot. So when the leak detection company came, they did find the irrigation leak in the back, and that promptly got fixed. And then he was able to narrow down that the location was actually on the city side. And so finally, I'm going to say, what, five weeks later, the water leak did get fixed. And so Trevor did promptly contact me and told me to submit the bills, which we did. We submitted the plumber bill, the leak detection bill, and the cost to fix the wall. My husband and I did not submit our bill or our time to the city to get reimbursed or manions, and that probably would have amounted to over two thousand dollars. And so anyway, we did apply to get relief for the water bill, and, which was eight hundred dollars. And we were told we could appeal that. So anyway, when we got turned down, I talked with Kelly, who's the personal assistant, and we kind of decided, well, well, it's, we'll just let it go. However, the reason I'm here is because a couple days later, while I'm working at the house, Jean Copes showed up with Dale Barrett. And Jean and Dale want to show me the city's plans to ask the Millers for a permanent easement onto their property to access the wet well. It seems that many years ago, this was overlooked before the Millers bought their house. And so I realize these are two separate issues, but yet, how would you feel if you were the homeowner and the city had a water leak coming into your house and you were told, it's my problem, not the city's? And it goes on for five weeks. Nobody ever really got an apology, but now the city's asking us, gonna be asking us for a permanent easement onto their property, which was missed thirty years ago, which some kind of an oversight. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say, is that, you know, we did have a water leak. It was a big hassle, and now the city's going to come back around and ask us for a permanent easement onto their property after that whole thing and denying our water bill. So that's it. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, I just, if nobody apologized, and I'd be surprised, I know these folks, and they probably did, maybe it wasn't loud or something, but, you know, we do apologize for all the issues going on. And also, we appreciate the Millers having let us have access when we've needed to have it, because that is our only access to that lift station. And so they're really helping us out by doing that.
It did take weeks for us to try to isolate and figure out where all the water was coming from, because there were a lot of things happening. So it did take time, and they were patient to process the best they could. It was frustrating to constantly have water, but I could not know where the problem was. So it was a frustrating issue for the homeowner and for Donna, to give the property manager a chance.
If there had not been a city water leak and only irrigation leak, would that have been found much sooner?
I can speculate on that. I know the guys went out repeatedly trying to figure out, like I say, most commonly when the leaks are on the bills, it's toilet flappers. I mean, that's probably eighty percent, I don't know what it ends up being. So it's just.
Let me address one of these questions. I think I know what you're saying, Mike. I think in this case, that, I mean, if somebody comes on and there's a leak, this irrigation leak, it's a matter of somebody going and doing the survey and saying, yes, you have a leak here. We don't automatically say, well, maybe let's check on the other side of the meter to see that. So I think the fact that we did have a leak at the same time somebody was having a leak, and then on top of that, our leak was actually manifesting itself inside the house, those are two really rare events. So I think it would have been more routine if they only had that.
Well, we went back a little bit in the process because when M and S went out, they verified that, they confirmed that the water in the cable conduit was not coming from the meter. And then originally, when Darryl had gone out, he shut off the irrigation system and the meter stopped running. So those are some of the things that they do immediately to try to isolate. And if the meter continued to run, obviously that's going to tell you something. So not only did our own team isolate and kind of prove that it wasn't coming through the meter, but then the plumbers did the same thing.
I don't think, I don't think Mike was questioning the process. It was just, just a theoretical question. If we didn't have all that on the other side, it would have been easier. Yes, it would have been, because you wouldn't have had so many places to check.
Sure.
You shut off something and you think it's going to be the irrigation leak, and then you still got water coming in the garage through conduit. So yeah, it was, it was a rare, complicated situation to turn off the irrigation.
Right.
And you fixed it.
Okay. Looking for our motion.
It seemed we'd be going against policy, and everything that could have been done was done appropriately. Not hearing another discussion, I guess I would make a motion to deny the appeal of the Millers' water bill.
I'll second that motion. These are never comfortable decisions for us. There's always an underlying reason, but we do have these policies in place for a reason. And what I'd like to also ask, Karen, is that with the new water meters that we're hoping to get installed, do you believe this?
Definitely. Currently, our public party, bills go out month to month, and you may not know for thirty days if you have a leak with the new cool meters as we follow. You can set alerts if you know within that twenty-four hour period on a given day that you've got water running. It's just like if triggers the leak detection come on our bill, they, they'll go out just as fast as they need.
They could go to their phone, computer, email.
They can get an email, or they can get an alert on their phone. So they would know immediately that they've got a leak that's been running for twenty-four.
How much is that meter?
How much does a meter cost? Nothing to the customer, to the, only to the city.
That's the one we just got the loan for, that we'll be talking about at the workshop on next Tuesday. But that's, that's the city replacing all the meter modules.
Okay, so the customer isn't going to be charged at all?
No.
Because that was what I was hoping we could do as a nice gesture would be to give them one, but, okay.
Okay, we have a motion to deny.
If I could just throw up one other thing, because Ms. Beck was brought up the issue of the easement or the right of way. I mean, that's something that we will deal with separately and, you know, recognize there's a value to that and all, but it's kind of hard to tie the two.
And I guess that, you know, the city's kind of going to be asking for a big favor with that, it's kind of.
Yeah, but yeah, let's, let's separate them.
Okay.
Okay. Colleen?
Okay. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Counselor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Mayor Stidle?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to our next item. Consideration of Appointment to Member Short Term Rental Task Force. Jeff?
If I could just make a comment. Robin Rizley, or Counselor Rizley contacted me after reviewing the application materials and brought up a good point. The, the short term rental task force, if you look at the form, the intent was, for example, number six is age. And it's not, we're not, you know, we're not going to be employing somebody, but it was the idea to give data to, so that we could have a diversity. And that was the intent. But it is kind of a iffy thing as far as saying that you can include age as far as making your determination, and I would urge you to not consider that. It's just, it's just information. And then it can be implied when you look at current occupation, retired. I would love to think I was twenty-five and retiring, but some people can. But that also might have an age implication with it. And so when you go to the very last page that has the voting part on it, it has everybody's name and age, gender, location, there's three, there's three categories there. Age, gender, and it says occupation slash retired. Those urging you to not give those great weight in this, although, you know, in the conversations we had with the attorney, it's a different threshold when you are not dealing with an employment situation. But it's probably not best practice for us to include that. But the intent was to actually increase the diversity. So just want to make that comment before we started.
I'm sorry, Jeff, if you would.
Sure. Happy New Year to everybody. And this is for consideration of short term rental task force appointment. And with the recent short term rental order ordinance amendments, it was also provisioned in that to set up a short term rental task force. And so we met, I think it was maybe two months ago, and we extended that to the end of the year for applications. We got eighteen applications, and I would think that it's just because everyone wants to dig into the data as much as I do. And, but I really want to thank everyone who did put their names in the hat. I'm excited about this. I love this kind of task force. The mission, in order to maintain the residential character and livability of its neighborhoods and to prevent the adverse effects of the transient occupancy of dwelling units on residential neighborhoods, it is necessary to limit and regulate the transient occupancy of dwelling units by investigating the rental permitting violations and impacts of the STR program in Cannon Beach. And so we, we put out the scope of work and the areas of analysis, and we put out kind of three basic areas to dig into. Cannon Beach seeks seeing an increase of STR activity and to dig in, if so, are they geographically concentrated? If so, are they related to intensity or duration of use? If so, are there other concerns? Number two, if Cannon Beach seen an increase in STR influenced complaints? If so, are they traffic or parking related? Are they noise or activity related? Or are they impacting other concerns? Three, are there current issues with the STR program? Do current STR meet, short term rentals meet parking requirements? What is the geographic zoning district and other program related breakout of the data? Are there code alignment concerns with other aspects of the code such as fire, safety, parking, et cetera? Four, what are the residential neighborhood impacts of the STR program? Five, what are the physical impacts of the PROS STR program? And the timing, we had said the task force would meet quarterly and serve for four years in, at least in gathering the data. We also set a kind of a guideline of seven to eleven members with at least two alternates. And that's why it's encouraging to see eighteen applications. We set out the STR task force composition to be members, broad members of the community, various types of homeownerships be represented, have some housing advocacy if there's, if there's any in our community to be represented, workforce and chamber tourism representation. And so I also wanted to say that Colleen has gotten some emails after us putting out that, you know, we would like to see you there in attendance of. And I just wanted to say that Lisa Kerr said that she would not be able to presence be helpful tonight. She didn't know that. I hope that doesn't jeopardize my chances. She said she couldn't be here. We got one from Claudia Tutan Dorde, hopefully I said that. And she said she was leaving early and will be out of the country until the twenty-third. She also said that she had some answers if you guys had questions of, further questions of her. Melissa Watson said, I would love to attend, but unfortunately have prior commitment. Mary Ann Sinkler said, hi, Colleen, I think I let you know already that she'll be in Hawaii and won't be able to attend. Bob Noroni said, thank you, but he'll be in Palm Springs next week. And, and gave a cell number to say if we need to call him. None of them said they would be in Buffalo, New York. You know? But anyhow.
I think we should call Bob.
Yeah, that's right. So anyhow, also, I, we didn't give any kind of recommendation on how to sort these. That spreadsheet was simply to say an inclusive, you know, how, we want some broad representation, and that's what the Planning Commission said and, and the city council. And so I know Colleen had a system that she would be happy to offer if you want some advice or a spread, yeah, sheet, yeah. Okay?
Just what we're voting on?
Yeah.
So we're selecting the eleven?
Let me comment on that. I looked through, it's about, pretty clearly twelve of the eighteen are short term rental advocates. So to pick eleven, it seems to me this is going to be heavily weighted to the short term rental advocate. I see, I know we were wanting to get a balance of those people, just homeowners that, you know, didn't rent, long term renters, people that only rent long term. And there's probably four that would fit in those categories, a business owner representative. So I'm having a little trouble saying we'd take eleven when it will bias the mix and the balance that I think we were looking for. I'd recommend that we look at a slate of about seven with two alternates. It's still manageable, and I'm seeing how many people already can't even be here for this meeting. So I don't know how the rest of you feel on that, but I just felt that eleven was going to be unwieldy and balanced heavily to short term rentals. You would hope that they can be open minded and look at the data, but I know that there's a bias there from the comments I've already received.
I agree with that. I looked at it also, and it seemed like you would just be making a pre-decision on how that was going to all turn out. So when you do look at it, it does appear that if you were to pick seven, it would be more balanced as to what a decision, a fair decision to come to.
Remember too, I think you're talking about either seven plus two or eleven plus two. Right.
Don't you think when people vote for seven, some will have more votes than others? So the other ones will?
Oh, I'm just saying, but you'll have a total, with a seven, you'll have a total of nine. Because you're, you're all going.
Seven with two alternatives.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not just a seven.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, it's a great point. If you keep it to seven, you know, nothing's saying that you have to keep it to two alternates or whatever. I agree with Councilmember Benfield's statement about, you know, it's, people commit and, you know, it's a four-year process, so it may be nice to keep more alternates than just the two to begin with.
I think also, I'm, eleven people in one meeting is cumbersome. I've been in committees with that many, and it's hard to get a word in. So seven is a workable unit, especially when you're studying data, which is going to be the main project here. So I, I like that idea.
I think if the council keeps in mind this idea of maintaining a balance of, like we were hoping for, we'd go ahead and vote on seven. And pick the top vote getters there, and then we can discuss candidates for the two alternative positions.
Okay. So are we ready to vote then?
So do we vote for nine then?
Well, I. Pick the top four there, and then we can discuss candidates for the two alternate positions.
Okay. So, are we ready to vote then?
So, do we vote for nine then?
Well, I, it seems like, I don't know. It seems if you vote for the seven and see what that is, then-
Let's see.
Vote again, the two alternates out of the remaining group. I think we end up, then you see, well, we're not wanting to pick an alternate. What is the likelihood? Should be sure that it's somebody that Realtor or business owner or short-term rental makes.
I think also, by the five of us voting for seven folks, you're going to have a variable of, you know, 10 or 12 people. Colleen, I'll have to figure out which ones get the most votes and then the ones that get the next most votes. So, you're going to have some that get five, some that get four, some that get three. We might be able to figure out who the alternates are just from that.
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, Colin and I were just talking that we want to check because this committee was created by resolution, and we want to check. We think that the resolution said that there was a range of seven to 11 or something.
I, I was mistaken. I wasn't wrong.
I'm sorry.
I was mistaken.
Oh.
It does say that now-
You misinformed yourself? You misinformed yourself?
I did. I lied. Anyway, now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Cannon Beach hereby establishes an 11-member short-term rental program task force review, make program and make suggestions. We will review the program and make suggestions, report to council. So, it does say you will, it wasn't a range. It was, remember in discussion, we discussed ranges, but in the ordinance, it was 11.
Okay, good catch.
So, we may want to advise-
I think that because they're advisory to you, that it would probably be wise if we moved this to February 3rd, change the resolution, change the resolution and then make the appointments at that time.
Here's an option, and I don't know if this fits within the ordinance. If we picked 11 and then two of those folks became alternates?
Then that would be nine.
You're still setting, you're setting yourself up for smaller groups than what you're actually doing.
Yeah? Still, they're selected. Oh, well, okay, I'm-
Yes, there are other ways to do it.
I'm comfortable with 11 if we wanted to pick that tonight.
And I'm not trying to push towards that. I'm just that, since they're advisory to you, I want to make sure that we don't have a glitch in how we set it up.
All right, you brought that up. Do you care which way we go?
Yeah. My comments don't change as a result of the resolution being as, as we thought it was from the instructions. What I'm hearing, you, Bruce, is that if we want to stick with the seven plus two alternates, we should amend the resolution to state that. And we couldn't vote until that then done passed. I mean, we do that tonight and then go ahead and vote? But we have-
I think we need to advertise a resolution.
Do you-
I'm sorry, but we just want to make sure you're doing, it's all right and you changed something here.
Do you want to specify the number of alternates? Or do you want to say with alternates? I mean, we can be a little flexible in that respect?
I'd rather meet more clear.
I meant, so you want to pick a number of alternates in that? So, seven plus two, or seven plus four, or?
Seven plus two.
Okay, that's fine. We can always add one later if we have to. I mean, when somebody, when somebody steps down from, from a committee, we have to add them anyhow, so, yeah. Okay. Okay, we'll do it next, next month.
Yes, it'll be on-
All right, everybody.
Just a practice.
Plus, all those people would be back.
Well, you know-
They'll still be in Palm Springs.
With, with tans.
With tans, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, let's go.
Yeah, Bob will be here.
All those with tan.
Let's call Bob and tell him we postponed just because he's not here.
Yeah, I can feel guilty.
Okay, last item. Consideration of Appointment to the Planning Commission and/or Design Review. If there's anybody out there would like to step up for Design Review. We have one position open for Planning Commission, which is Daryl Johnson wants to renew. And Colleen explained to me that he's already served most of his eight-year, eight consecutive-year restrictions, so he'll only serve for two years on this vote. Correct?
Correct. He did a partial term because someone left early.
Right.
So, he had two, then four.
So. Okay. Vote and pass your ballot down, I guess.
Colleen, how long's that Design Review Board position been open?
Todd Rowley's position expired December 31st.
Oh, okay, so it's-
So, for anybody out there, this is the time for the advertisement. Design Review is actually a fun committee to be on. If you want to get involved, it's a good starter committee.
Well, this was obviously much easier. Anatomous?
Anatomous.
For Daryl Johnson, so we just need a motion to appoint him.
Okay.
I move that we appoint Daryl Johnson to the, or to renew his, is appoint, okay. Appoint him to the Planning Commission?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 You need to do roll call.
A lot of roll of call.
Okay, roll call.
Yeah, that's how we usually, anyway. Council President Benefield?
Yes.
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Counselor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
And Mayor Stidle?
Yes.
Thank you.
I was impressed that everybody listened, though. Okay, that concludes our regular meeting. So, informational stuff, status report.
Can I ask?
Questions?
I wanted to ask about the water at the Breakers Point, a point water main locate at General Utilities, new electric line board job. Can you explain a little more about that? I saw trucks out there for a while. I don't, I can't.
Oh, Trevor, trucks have been there.
So, Breakers Point for years-
I know, Trevor. Everybody wants to hear you.
State your name and address. Breakers Point for years, they're power supply being broken, disconnected, so it takes like four times for Pacific Power to actually do something about it. So, Ryan Major comes up there, going to do utility line in for the power company to put the power supply in for the Breakers Point.
So, do we have anything to do with city stuff?
No, we were up there doing locate.
For Breakers?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then for parks, hedge reduction around town? I was curious about that because I did get one complaint from someone saying that they had not, the owner had not been notified, employees had been, and they were a little upset about our process. So, I can tell you more about that later, but I didn't know we were going around doing hedge reductions.
Each year, we do our normal annual maintenance of trimming back hedges that have created line intersections. They approach out into the right-of-way, but people can't park their cars and they're not on the side of the road because vegetation is wrong. So, that includes hedges, any vegetation, whatever. They do that annually.
Do you notify the owner ahead of time?
Typically, because it would be the whole town, I mean, we could start putting something in the paper on the website to let people know that it's that time of year, but it's pretty much curb and roads routine. Some of the hedges have gotten really high, and so we have lots of complaints about line spots and intersections. And we don't always cut the hedges back every single year, but we try to keep the level down.
And is this just downtown? It's not private?
It's throughout town property.
Well, it's, it's city property around town.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you don't leave it on private property.
Okay.
So, it's, it's just, just around town, hard light area only.
Okay.
I, I think that is kind of concerning. If it is a hedge that has been maintained by a property owner unbeknownst to them that it's on the right-of-way, they should at least be notified. Now-
We have a handful of those where property owners want to do it and customer-related, so you have to challenge them. They allow them to do it. So, if we're going to come to something beyond that, typically, we have those, it works pretty good that he knows who those folks are and he'll, we don't do a, we don't do an application that you go and they want to be back, you've got that something you need to start doing.
I really do because they, it's horrible to have an employee tell you that this is what's going to happen. It has to happen, and it needs to be done immediately. And I don't think that the owner of a property should hear that from an employee. I think they should hear it from the city and have a discussion if they don't agree.
So, you just put something in the paper, you put something on our website, or you Facebook.
Well, contacting them directly would be really nice.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you're, say, call the ones that the homeowners that didn't maintain?
Yeah, and that's pretty obvious.
That's the set that we're talking about, not necessarily people that, but a city right-of-way and the trim that way? Are we talking about?
I think it'd be nice to contact everybody that, I mean, let them know. Because when they're being told they should take it out, that's not, that's pretty abrupt.
But we would, yeah, and we wouldn't be telling them that they had to take it out if it was on a right-of-way, I don't think. But we'll, we'll check into the whole situation.
Okay, thank you.
I, there's, I was confronted by two situations. One was dramatic. It's a hedge that has never been trimmed. I mean, never been maintained by the city. It's always been maintained by the property owner.
Did you notice that on the top, you had those trees that was?
Jackson? Adams? I think. North side of the sidewalk. Beautiful old house. Been there, and that hedge has been there forever. So, all of a sudden, we're doing all this nice maintenance, which is good that we're doing our maintenance properly. But when it's an obvious situation like that one, that needs to be addressed a little differently.
Agreed.
That's all. Anything else? The, go to the order? Bruce?
First of all, retreat subjects. If you want, if anybody has any suggestions, if you want to get them to us. Colleen handed me the one from last year. You might just want to Xerox it and send it in. It's pretty much the same ones we've had for years. And then also, I think that Chief Skirmerhorn has an announcement that we'll be happy to hear. You forgot.
We, no, we do have a new code enforcement officer who started on the 22nd this month. His name is Travis Henshu. He has 13 years, I think, experience working with charter cables. So, he has good customer service skills and patience. So, I'll be introducing him shortly at a council meeting, but we're happy to have that position filled.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Jason.
I think he's positioned. I bet you all have.
Okay, that's it, then we are adjourned. Thank you.